Call this meeting to order on November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen at six thirty P. M. Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge of allegiance, we will take a moment of silence in remembrance of Victor Vasquez, Pamela Marcus, May Name Pamela Hood, who was a graduate of nineteen eighty-two from Adam City High School, and Carlos Moreno, who has many relatives that live in the Commerce City area.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We please have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Mr. Drilling?
Here.
Mrs. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Rolla?
Here. Need a motion for the approvals of the minutes on October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion to approve the minutes of October two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Need a motion for the approval of the minutes on October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion to approve the minutes of October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes on November third, two thousand seventeen.
I move that we approve the minutes for November third, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes on November ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion to approve the minutes of November ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, but before we approve it, there's an amendment to the agenda. There is a need to amend the agenda to, one, make a correction to personnel action under first-year probationary title of ESL coordinator should be special ed teacher, and also to remove la cochise conference presentation under superintendent's report. This will be presented at a later date.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Moving on to recognition and celebrations, I will turn it over to Dr. Abrego.
Thank you, Mr. Rolla. We do have two recognitions. At this time, I'd like to ask the principal of Allsup Elementary, Mr. Mike Abdeel, to come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Abrego, President Rolla, distinguished members of the board. Thank you so much for taking time tonight to recognize a couple of the groups of people who support Allsup Elementary. And the first group that I want to recognize is my Partners in Education Group. Allsup Elementary recognizes the importance of the partnership between families and schools. The partnership not only leads to a strong climate and culture, but directly leads to greater student achievement. Allsup would like to thank the Board of Education for recognizing our partners in education. Our Partners in Education Group are Regina Hurtado, Melinda Rios, Josephine Grant, Teri Kichicho, Sabrina Torino, and Lauren Ramirez. These ladies are simply the lifeblood of our school. They help us make connections with the community, plan all fundraisers, all while volunteering at the school daily. The team works closely with the school to be sure that we are making community connections. The team has been recognized twice for outstanding community spirit by the city council for their participation in the Memorial Day Parade, their planning for major fundraisers, as well as other fundraisers throughout the year, such as our Fall Festival and upcoming car show. Most importantly, they go out of their way to form partnerships with all community stakeholders. The team also funds field trips for students so they can get hands-on experience and ensure all teachers have the supplies they need to support the everyday instruction of our students. The team also supports the most popular item at Allsup, the school store. We wholeheartedly respect the work of our pie group and are proud to have the Board of Education recognize them as a huge part of the success at Allsup Elementary.
If I could have my pie group come up, please. Congratulations.
Go down and congratulate them, then have a picture taken.
Do you want to get in? I'll get you off. Are you part of the group? You sure? Come on, celebrate. Come on, celebrate your goodness.
Do you have any spouses or family that want to take a picture? You guys want to have a pic? Students, why don't you come up so we can take it with you?
Oh, I see. You're right.
You are...
Everybody move a little bit more toward the center, please. Great, now I can see everyone. Looking right here, please. Ready? One, two, three, and one more to be sure. Ready? Set. Thank you.
Yay.
We for the day.
Yes, yes. King.
We also have a second recognition tonight that we want to thank the board for taking time to recognize, and this is really a group of teachers that have gone above and beyond. Allsup Elementary is very proud to be the home of several great teachers that give a hundred and ten percent to support our students on a daily basis. A leader is only as good as the team around them. Ms. Menard and I know how lucky we are to have the team that we do. Last year, several of our teachers were selected by the company representing Benchmark to be videotaped to provide professional development to other teachers. They were selected as models of great teaching to help other teachers become great teachers. It takes a lot to be willing to volunteer to have yourself taped for other teachers to learn from at a school, national, and district level. As we were rolling out Benchmark as a district, they were leaders to show how it is done. To have all those teachers from one school chosen as demonstration classroom says a lot about the teamwork we have among our teachers. I want to thank the Board of Education for recognizing them. Not only did these teachers put themselves on display for Benchmark, but consistently go above and beyond. Some examples are, Mr. Ambrosino is the school's G.T. liaison, our association representative for the building, and helped create our planning template to support better instruction. Mrs. Blitz runs her own after-school book club to support our G.T. students and has served as principal for our tutoring program in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Emily Keening runs our school website and our Facebook page. Lindsay Stanton served as our tutoring principal in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and has continued her education so that she could serve our Learning Lab students. Mr. Tanner is a model on how to support our most struggling students and show very high growth and achievement on a daily basis, and is always willing to support students on his own time for tutoring. We are very lucky to have these teachers at our school. We recognize that it is teachers that lead to a great school, and we want to give these teachers a very special thank you. So the teachers we'd like to recognize tonight are Gillian Blitz, Cora Ambrosino, Michael Tanner, Emily Keening, and Lindsay Stanton. Thank you.
Do you have any spouses? Friends?
Oh, no.
Do you have any friends?
One, two, three, and one more to be sure. Ready, set.
Yeah, I finally got good glasses.
Thank you, guys, for recognizing these groups. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Is that it, Dr.? Moving on to audience comments at this time. As we move into audience comments, just a reminder, state your name. You have three minutes to speak. No seating of time will be permitted between speakers. Your comments can suggest improvements, but should be productive. You can provide a written statement to the board review. The president can recognize a board member or the president to respond to a question to clarify a district's position. At this time, the first individual will be Amanda Gonzalez.
Dr. Abrego, President Rolla, members of the board, I'm Amanda Gonzalez. I have five children who attend schools in this district, one at Central, one at Kearney, and three at Adam City High School. Taken directly from the Adams fourteen website, the strategic imperatives of the Board of Education are to dramatically improve academic performance, to significantly empower all families and community members to become engaged partners in their child's education by creating welcoming environments, and to intentionally increase and improve communication district-wide, both internally and externally. And it is within the scope of these three imperatives that I speak tonight. How are you dramatically improving academic performance when up until recently juniors in Algebra II at Adam City High School are in a class of roughly seventy-five students, justified by cycling through of teachers? How does this support research-based methods like consistency of instruction, which allows relationships to be forged, pushing our kids towards trust in their teachers and a willingness to explore mathematical concepts? When our kids are thrust into classes taught by teachers who are so overworked that their own passions for teaching are dwindled, you're not supporting academic performance. In fact, you're contributing to the demise of proficiency and growth. You're contributing to the teacher shortage in this district rather than investing in human capital. How are you striving towards empowerment of families to take part in the education of their children and moving towards the increase of communication between community and schools when Dr. Abrego felt it was a good idea to cancel parent conferences without any word to parents? I'm perplexed as to why teachers at the high school were not told about the cancellation of conferences. Rather, they were told that the parents would rather receive home visits. I ask you, how are teachers at the secondary level who have an average of a hundred and fifty students supposed to visit the homes of each and every one of their students and have meaningful conversations? I ask you why you would approve the absurd idea to stop conferences between parents and teachers when your self-identified imperative is to improve communication. Infinite campus is a tool to spur on conversations. It is not the sole way of having that conversation. How are you moving toward the increase of communication between the community and schools when the school board holds a secret meeting before the board meeting to extend Abrego's contract and to increase his pay before the election results come in? Secrecy doesn't build trust. It builds...it tears it down. I understand not airing your dirty laundry, but please don't pretend that it doesn't exist. It's critical to celebrate the positive, but don't take advantage of the lower education levels of the community or the lack of school options that we have in Commerce City. A superintendent that toots his own horn in misspelled articles in the Adams fourteen newspaper and misspellings paid-for Facebook ads is unprofessional. Do you really think that the community is so easily deceived that they believe that only by highlighting the positives it cancels out the mismanagement of schools, the mistreatment and the blackballing of Adams fourteen staff members, and the culture of fear that has been brought on by the current superintendent? It's like putting pearls on a pig. Change takes time, and I'm not saying that the policies implemented by Dr. Abrego can't work, but give them time to produce results before you just honor him through pay for the bullying that he's brought into this district. If anything, use the money to hire enough qualified teachers at the high school to reduce the class sizes, which will impact student performance. Thank you.
Just to make sure that...Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Make sure you're here at the next board meeting because we will have answers to your questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Next individual, Stephanie Levine.
Good evening, Dr. Abrego, President Rolla, and distinguished members of the board. My purpose in speaking to you today is to continue to magnify the importance of clear communication between you all as board members and our students. About two months ago, Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Rolla came to our student council class as sort of a reintroduction into the school year to make sure their presence was known and to make sure kids understood you were here for them. My students were very appreciative of this, and it appeared as though it would be possible to continue the relationship. Secretly extending the contract of Dr. Abrego without the input of the students and community members you serve could have posed a huge threat to this growing relationship, and I find it to have been a wise choice in postponing the decision until you could ensure that it was made with students at the forefront. To solidify that this was a wise choice, I want to tell you all about a conversation I had with the senior in student council who was really seen it all. As an elected student leader for four years, running and a model student athlete, this young woman is a trusted and dependable member of our student body. While speaking with her, a different peer came in, upset about how a security guard had walked up to her on her way in, asking where she was going and where her pass was. Even though he was just doing his job, her response was, "I should be asking you who you are, where you're going, and where your pass is," stating she had never seen him before, wondering how long he had even worked at our school. Mind you, this conversation was just last week. She also mentioned that she is sick of having to have the same conversation with a different person every year and throughout the year. As I was continuing to speak with the young woman on student council, we were discussing a recent talk that she had just had with the leadership in our building currently. The leadership stated that student council was not doing enough to be ambassadors and discussed how hard it is to better the culture in our building and how hard of a job the leadership currently has in tackling this incredibly difficult task. Now, the important part of this story is not the accusatory nature, lack of listening ability, or defensiveness of some of our current leadership, but rather this student's response. Respectfully, she stated that she was well aware of how hard it was and is, as she and her classmates have had the pleasure of doing this job for the past four years. As the adults then responded and saying that they are now here, not going anywhere, and the students don't have to worry about it, she found herself unable to believe any of the words that came out of their mouths. She and her peers have been let down so many times by the administration in our building that they have never had the privilege of coming into a school year, knowing their district will hire and keep those that they can count on and those that they have built trusting relationships with. Having recently been told by members of our administration that I personally need to do more to ensure our kids interact with the adults in the building more respectfully and that I should train my students to speak more like Michelle Obama, this conversation really hit me hard. Our students are not attempting to be disrespectful or callous. They are merely a product of their environment. They have been raised into an academic environment of mistrust and outright caution and are merely trying to protect their school experiences and education from being tampered with. Now, having heard this story, I urge you severely to consider the choices you are making in hiring leadership in and outside of our building, as these choices do not just produce short-term effects, but create personality traits within our students that have the ability to hinder them as college and career-ready adults. I have and still do believe that there is time and opportunity to head in the right direction this year and in the years to come, and I hope you all continue to do so for the sake of our students and for the best interest of their futures. Thank you.
Good evening, President Rolla, Dr. Abrego, distinguished members of the board. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. So a few things. There were a lot of people who showed up at a meeting that was last a couple weeks ago, and it had to do with communication and lack thereof. One of...I had some board members reach out to me over the weekend, and one of the things that got brought up was that we are...changes needed to be made, and we were failing our kids. And I'm going to repeat now what I repeated then and what I've repeated to leadership, both district and building leadership. That is all we have seen, is change upon change upon change. There has been no consistency, and who gets blamed are the staff here. Every time new leadership comes in, whether it's at the building level or the district level, they come in and swipe in their own agenda. Nobody asks those of us who have been here and have been committed to the kids in this district. I'm in my twenty-first year. We don't get asked. We just say, okay, we're coming in with new change. There has been no consistency. So that means our kids have received no consistency. Also, I was asked that they wanted to keep the lines of communication open, so I'm giving you, we are going to have...we would like to have a joint Board of Ed, ARCTA meeting, and the three dates that I am proposing is on January sixteenth, February sixth, or February twentieth. Lastly, I want to talk about the recess thing. I would have brought this up at our district meeting, but it has been postponed now twice. So I'm going to bring up what the members are telling me. Having a committee feels like they're being pushed aside and avoided. They don't want to address what is really happening, and what is really happening is when you take recess away, behaviors have started to kick in. And if you've ever been in a classroom when there is a ton of snow days, that's all the kids do is feel like they are being shut in. And if you have kids of your own, being shut in a building in their own home creates behaviors for a parent. Well, imagine if you've got thirty kids. What is it like? Or in a school, five hundred kids, what is it like when they're shut in and they don't get time to move? So, a committee might be fine, but the fact is, is it can just be fixed. As you probably know, I have already spoken with Yesenia Robles from Chalkbeat. She also...when she talked to me about the parent-teacher conferences, she also talked to me about recess and what's going on at the high school and is wanting to talk with me and warn people at the high school as well, as well as elementary teachers in regards to recess. These issues aren't going away, and we do need to fix them. Thank you.
Next, we will have Reba Droiter.
Good evening. I'm Reba Droiter, and hello, board, Mr. Rolla, Mr. Abrego. Hello, Monica. So, I've come to talk to you about Winterfest, which is December second, and I have flyers for all of you. And this year, it's going to be even bigger, I think, than last year. We have even more choirs that we're finding places for, and this is a combined effort of School District fourteen and Twenty-seven J., the city, the county, Stout Street, many, many businesses, United Power, are coming to give our kids a wonderful party. And so I hope you come. We need support. And last year, you supported us with donating funds for the drinks, which is hot chocolate and cider, and we'd like that again. And I did hear one day the Figure Five Hundred, and I'd like you to consider that because we are going to be having a lot more kids, and I would love it if you would come and help to serve the drinks. We're going to make it a little bit easier this year. We'll be doing...it's called Pancakes, Pajamas, and Santa. All the kids are coming in pajamas. If you were there last year, you saw me in mine, and so I hope that you come in your pajamas. And the...hopefully, Santa's coming on a fire truck, so the firemen will be there as well as the police department. So I hope you come. So this year, we're doing things a little bit different. We've been doing gifts. I have a flyer for you for this also. I'm going to try and make this really quick. So it's called Project Present. In the past, we have, for families that needed it, we've gotten the names. Some schools do their own. The city does its own. We've had the Giving Tree right here in the E.S.S. building. We've had all of these people doing different things. So we're not doing that this year. All the names are coming into a central point with the rec center, and we are all combining forces so that nobody has, like, many things delivered to their house, and then we have kids over here that don't have anything. We can track this better. We can do better gifts, and we're raising money for that. And I'm going to give you a list of the only thing that I would like for everyone, employees of the district, pies, PTOs to come and wrap gifts, because we will have a ton of gifts that we are giving out. And they are being delivered by the...very quietly by the police department. Then, we used to give stuff, these things away at Winterfest, but we're not doing that anymore. Also, our food baskets, we're consolidating all of our food baskets into one event that we started last year, where everybody comes to the...our selected families come to the Adams County Food Bank, and they get enough...we are all there to help them. It's called Project Holiday Feast, and they will receive enough food to last them the entire winter break. And I'd like to thank the sheriff's department for supplying coupons for us, because we need those as well. So thank you, Mr. Drilling. So I'm going to give you flyers on all these things, and then there's one about the gingerbread contest. We have a gingerbread contest, house contest, that we'll be doing as well. So I hope you consider all of these things, and if anyone would like to give, we're still four hundred dollars. We can take a thousand dollars and turn it into ten thousand at the Adams County Food Bank, and we're still...we're four hundred dollars short. So I'm going to pass... So, I'm going to pass these out if I can come up and pass them out to you. I expect to see everyone there in their slippers and pajamas.
Just want to remind you that all answers to community response always come up in the next board meeting. So, for all the people that came up and voiced their concerns, Dr. Obrego or someone on this board will respond, respond to your comments. So, hopefully, you'll be here to listen to your comments, or to the comments. Wait a few seconds for the people that want to leave.
Yes, Mr. Rola, we have four short reports. The first one's going to be the homecoming awards by Reba and Kristy Douglas. So, Reba, would you like to step up to the mic?
Love to. So, I'm Reba Droiter, and I'm the Vice President of the Commerce City Business and Professional Association.
And I'm Kristy Douglas, and I'm serving as the President for the Commerce City Business and Professional Association.
And we have Mr. Dale Mingleton here, and he is the Treasurer of the Commerce City Business and Professional Association. And we sponsor many things that some of you know that we do and some that you know, don't know that we do, we're kind of everywhere. And we sponsor part of the parade, and we sponsor the judging of the floats. And so, tonight, we, before we start, I just want to tell everybody that's here, we have cupcakes for you in the foyer out there after we're done, because we're really celebrating. And this parade, Mr. Rola might remember, when it was over at the old high school, I'm sure Ms. Cantana remembers, a few years back, we had maybe like six people that were in the parade. And thanks to very hard work of many people, and the city contributing a lot of time and effort, and other people that will be recognized tonight, this has turned into a major event. And so, I thank everybody for coming. So, tonight, the first one that we're going to give, yes, it's most unusual, and that is the Class of 2021. Does anybody hear from that class? Well, we'll be sharing and get it to them. The second one is Best School Spirit, and Kearney and Adam City Middle School tied. Is there anyone here from Kearney to accept this award? Anybody here from Adam? Oh, Cindy, come up. Cindy Gerlock was also a judge, and last year Cameron was a judge. These judges take this very seriously, and apparently so do the contestants, because they throw candy at the judges. Cameron, want to go get the?
The school is not on it. So, what was the?
Best School Spirit is, now, we only have one, but we will get, you can fight over this one tonight, and we'll get you another one. We've never had a tie before. So, Ms. Cameron will be, Cameron, you want to come up here? And who is from Kearney and Adam City Middle School? All right. All right, let's get him back here, Cameron, so we can get some good pictures of you. And the school that doesn't take it home will be sharing, get you another one.
Do we want Cameron to take a?
Now, since Cameron doesn't know which school you're from, she's just going to give one to one, and I'll get another one. All right, there you go. Thank you, Ms. Cameron. So, do we have anybody here from Hanson? Oh, Ms. Cameron, she can take it herself. Cameron's at Hanson. And her grades are excellent, I might add. And so, she will be getting Most Creative, and she can take it to her principal. You could take that home to your school. All right, so, Cameron, want to go put that one down, and we'll do, is there anybody here from Adam City High School? Anybody here from the band? All right, who wants to accept for Adam City High School Outstanding Band?
I'm always, they're next door to me.
All right, come on up. Ms. Cameron, this is Outstanding Band, Adam City High School.
Oh, brother. Thanks, Cameron. I'll give that to Ms. Bowie, she'll be thrilled.
All right, let's get a picture here.
Oh, gosh, we have to get a picture.
Yes, absolutely, this is very important. There's a lot of hard work goes into these practices and floats and bands. Now, I would like to know, who is here from the Class of 2018? All right, because that is First Place Class, so, of the floats. No? Anybody here from 2018? All right, who wants to accept for those guys? Somebody has to.
Well, these are juniors.
All right, you can give it to them. So, we want to get, this is First Place Class.
Who did that, all four of them?
It's your turn.
All right, we'll just send it to them. All right, thank you. So, we have, who do we have left? Oh, wait, that's not that girl. All right, so this one will have to be given away too. All right, so I know we have these two. Oh, so do we have anybody here from Monaco School? All right. You got a big award, the Judge's Special Award. You got Judge's Special Award. Notice, notice the trophies are in orange and green. I wonder why that is. Okay, now, who is here from Lester Arnold High School? No one? Oh, no, because they got Best of Parade. So, we'll see that they get to it. Now, they get their award. Now, the next award, you're so welcome. So, you can see how old I am, I've been here a long time. And there's a person in this room that is so outstanding, as a teacher, as a mentor, just the most incredible person that has made all of this happen at Adam City High School, and she is Stephanie Levine. And she gets our Outstanding Teacher of the Year Award from the Commerce City Business and Professional Association. There is absolutely no way that I can tell you all the things this woman has done, and the enthusiasm that she has brought to the students of Adam City High School and to the community. If you've ever seen her in action, she really is one in a million, and that's for sure, and I know this. So, we thank her very much. I just want to say, Mr. Rola, that you and Councilman Teeter, Smokey, and the Bandents got honorable mention for your car. And so, Cindy has one more special award.
Cars. Let me have my car.
Hi, I'm Cindy Gerlock, and this award is for the Commerce City Professional and Business Association for their many years of contributions to the city, District 14, and just decades of their contributions to the city. And, let's see. That would be President Kristy Douglas, the Treasurer Dale Milton, Secretary Brian Brierwilder from the Fire Department, Councilman Rick Teeter, Tom Green from United Power, Barb, I can't pronounce his name.
Oh, Human.
Human, okay, from District 14, excuse me. Terry Smith from Stout Street, and of course, Reba Droiter.
Who's the Vice President?
Who's the Vice President?
So, thank you very much, and it's just an honor to be part of all the students and staff that really care for this school district, and the wonderful students from Adam City High School. And don't forget to come out and get your cupcakes.
We have another presentation, I hope I'm saying this word correctly, Conclave?
Conclave.
Conclave, okay, Conclave Conference Presentation?
Good evening, Dr. Obrego, Mr. Rola, and members of the board. I'm Karen Chef, and I'm here to report on and thank you for approving my recent trip to Vancouver, Washington, to attend the MBA Research Conclave Conference in conjunction with my Required High School of Business training, also known as HSB. The training was on finance and business strategies. This is the third set of classes in a series of four that I am required to be certified in as an official High School of Business teacher. I've already been trained in leadership, wealth management, principles of business, business economics, all of which I teach this year at Adam City High School. I am scheduled to attend the final two classes, Principles of Marketing and Principles of Management, this summer 2018 in Columbus, Ohio. This HSB training consisted of four days of intensive learning and sharing best practices with my HSB peers from Colorado and other high schools from around the country. Intertwined into each day's agenda, we're at interactive activities and guest speakers from the business world, including local entrepreneurs and executives. Networking with business professionals throughout the week helped keep my business skills relevant to pass on to my students. I especially liked the walking field trip we took to Colab, a coworking site. If you've never heard of coworking, it's a very interesting concept. It's meant to bring both local and innovative business communities together. It's a new opportunity for the solopreneurs, interesting term, isn't it, solopreneurs? Freelancers, startups, and micro enterprise businesses involved in, excuse me, to be tied into something greater than their own veins. So, it brings all these people together. Because of the diverse industries involved in coworking spaces, there are new business ideas, strategies, and opportunities that form out of this organic incubator environment. This not only helps spark new business opportunities, but also helps facilitate innovation and rejuvenation within an established organization. It is a cutting-edge concept and one that will surely play the role in many of the lives of my business students as they develop their college and career lives and paths. High School of Business is a project-based learning and summative, the summative product, oh, excuse me, I should say, that High School of Business is project-based learning, and the summative product in the finance class that I took, the training for, is a semester of learning about the stock market, investing, and managing their own portfolio of stocks. All of the students choosing after rigorous research, so they walk them all through this, well, I will be next when they take this class. Business strategies, the other class I trained in, allows students to incorporate all of the compounding business skills that they've learned from all the other classes that I've already mentioned that they have, will have been, will have taken, into a required internship opportunity during their final semester of high school. Now that I have surpassed the 75% mark, where I've taken three-fourths of the classes, I have two left to go, like I said, in Columbus this coming summer, next year, the program requires that another High School of Business teacher be added to the staff. Requests for the FTE have been made, and I have been assured this action is in the This will give my high school students a valuable four-year pathway to college and careers in business. I am expecting that most of these students will likely major in business, as it is, if you did not know, the most common and popular major in college, and in my opinion, by far the most useful. Students who compete or complete all four years successfully are eligible for one of two exclusive $20,000 scholarships to Metropolitan State University, aka MSU. They will also earn seven free credits from MSU through national agreement made with MBA Research in Columbus, Ohio. This scholarship is an exciting annual opportunity only for Adam City High School of Business students. Thanks to two of my High School of Business steering team members, Dr. Clay Dotre, Interim Department Chair of Hospitality, Tourism, and Events at MSU, in conjunction with Mr. Jill Mingleton of the Adams 14 Foundation. I'm looking forward to continuing this progress to offer a valuable four-year business pathway for my students. Thank you once again for approving my recent trip to the training in Vancouver, Washington. It was an inspiring experience that has given me additional classroom skills to enhance my students' learning. So, thank you for having us, and I brought along a few of my esteemed colleagues, or not colleagues, but my steering team founding members. So, I have a steering team that meets monthly, made up of business professionals, and I have four of the founding members, Dr. Clay Dotre, Dale Mingleton, Ms. Stephanie Murphy, and Mr. Dave Chef. We also added Ms. Kristy Douglas this year, so thank you all for being here. I also have some students that would like to maybe want to talk about their experiences in my program. I've got Diana Olivas, Kimberly Gutierrez, Adriana Frias, and Tyler Vu. If you wouldn't mind if they could come up and just say a few things about the program that they learned throughout the few years that they've taken classes from me. So, who would like to come up first?
Come on, don't all just jump at the opportunity.
Good evening, President Rola, Dr. Abrego, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Tyler Vu, and I've been with the High School of Business program for, this is my second year, and I really enjoy the program so far. I have learned many different skills with, for leadership, communication, and creativity thus far, and I'm really excited to do the next two years of the High School of Business program. I really enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1380.16][1380.16][applause]
Sure, go up together.
No, not all at once, girls.[1389.01][1389.01][laughter]
My name is Diana Olivas, I'm president of F B L A Andeka.
And I'm the, Kimberly Gutierrez, I'm the vice president for F B L A Andeka.
And this year, we are in her tax help Colorado class. She, this is her second year.
Yeah, this is my second year doing taxes. I'm aiming for 100 hours of community service.
I am as well. I want the president's letter. It would look really well on my resume.
Mine as well.
And we really, this is, how many years?
Second and third year.
Third year in the High School of Business classes?
Oh, second, yeah.
And we really enjoy it. We like, she's planning on being?
I'm planning on doing business as a career.
She's planning on opening her own business. I plan on minoring in business. I want to open my parents' little restaurant, since they love cooking.
And I wanna take over my dad's construction company, because he's having a real hot trouble, trouble with it, so I wanna get a business major, so I can learn how to handle the financial, the accounting, the taxes of it, so, to make his life and our life a lot easier.
Yeah. Besides this helping us, it also helps our family. Like we said, we want to help our parents with the business.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Adriana Frias, and this is my first year in her High School of Business class, and I really liked it, because I actually wanna get a major in business, because I wanna continue my mom's business, both of my mom's businesses, in construction and also in, in party organizing. So I wanna help out my mom with that and continue the business, so it could go on for many years. And I learned many skills with Mrs. Schef's class.
Thank you, distinguished board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Clay Dotre. I'm with Metropolitan State University of Denver. I'm a professor in the College of Business. And last fall, I learned that Adam City was having a High School of Business program, and I contacted Karen, who I didn't know at the time, and I knew I wanted to be a part of it, because I'd heard such great things about it. And the more I got to know Karen and her students and the program, the more I wanted to see what kind of relationship we can create with, with Metro State. So based on the, the training that she's received that you've supported, and thank you very much for that, and the, and the rigor of the curriculum and the program, I took that back to our department chairs, and I had six department chairs review it, and we came up with a plan to accept seven credits, college credits, coming right out of this program. So we think that's a great pathway, pathway for our students. And also, in the, in these board meetings that, or our advisory board meetings that we had, I got to speak with, with Dale about creating a scholarship. So this, this program is, is very exciting, and you certainly have a gem of a, of a teacher in Karen, and I'm just happy to be a part of it. And I'm just here to show my support for the program and for the students. Thank you.
Thank you.[1608.63][1608.63][applause]
So, I think this is the first time in four years that I've ever addressed you[1616.16][1616.16][laughter] as your foundation executive director. Anyway, it's, the program is fantastic, and I would encourage you all to come over to the high school and see our students in action. Last week, the students actually participated in mock interviews to get themselves ready for competition. And we took, business folks would come in and sit down with our students. We interviewed them, went through the whole process, and then we sat them back down and told them what they did right, what they did wrong, and what improvement. Because the goal is, is that when they go to competition, that they represent Adam City and win, correct? That is what business is all about. Karen has done a, sorry, Ms. Schef, I apologize, has done a great job of really getting us all together. And, and thanks to Clay and Metro, we did create a partnership. As you know, I'm, I take our money and I go out and, and I, I match it. And so we matched with Metro, and we'll continue to try and do that. And if we can get two or three scholarships down to Metro, then we are, we're gonna win. And $20,000 for many of our students at Metropolitan State, with Pell and all that type of good stuff, will take them all the way through with zero debt. That is the goal of these scholarships, to keep debt off of our students. Because when you come out and you have no debt and you enter into a, in a career, you win. But when you come out and you've got $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 in debt, you're always digging yourself out of it. And so it's been a great partnership, and I really appreciate everything that the school is doing for the High School of Business. Thanks.[1705.13][1705.13][applause]
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Murphy, and I'm with Junior Achievement. So, to pass with Dale here of debt, I guess what I bring to her class is the opportunity to come to J A Finance Park, local here in Thornton, and her students are able to experience the day in the life of an adult, have kids, no kids, balance a budget, get denied for a mortgage, have to rent, have to take public transportation, and a credit score. So Junior Achievement and working with Karen is amazing, and we provide those guest speakers into the classroom around financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and workforce readiness. So I also work with several other High School of Business teachers in other districts, and she is really, truly in the passion for her students, you can tell. And her students will benefit greatly from this program. So, thank you.[1761.13][1761.13][applause]
So, thanks for having us. Thank you so much. And I have, like I said, about 15 steering team members that come every month and meet with us, and so it's nice to, usually there's about, oh, a handful to 10 that come every month and help me steer this program into success. So I just wanted you to see some of their faces. So thank you for having us.[1784.76][1784.76][applause]
I guess I can say, go Road Runners.